Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for September 5th, 2023. I call this meeting to order and again ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Here.
Gansey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Sawansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item we have on our committee meeting this evening is under Building and Zoning Committee Chairman Gunstein.
Thank you, President Wallace. Today we have... Petitioner is requiring a preliminary final plat of subdivision to create three lots and rezone the 4.6 acre property from B3 Neighborhood Shopping District to B3 PUD Zoning District. The petitioner is requesting a special use permit to allow a planned unit development and a car wash on Lot 1. The site plan identifies the car wash on Lot 1, a 14,000 square foot commercial building on Lot 2, and a 6,175 square foot daycare facility on Lot 3. All the buildings will have similar facades in which will include gray metallic panels, beige stone masonry, and light gray ephes. The site will be accessed via curb cuts on County Farm Road and on Newport Boulevard. The existing BP gas station curb cuts on County Farm Road will be removed. A cross-access agreement will allow access to the site via BP gas station curb cut on Sterns Road. The plans have been reviewed by DuPage County Department of Transportation and have no objections to the locations of the new curb cuts on County Farm Road, provided that it replaced the existing curb cut. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a required public hearing, reviewed the petitioner's request, and recommended approval at their meeting on August 3rd, 2023 with the following additional conditions. Number one, that a sound study be conducted by an acoustical engineer approved by the Planning and Development Director, that the sound wall will be extended along Newport Boulevard to screen the car wash entrance and stacking lanes, that the car wash hours operation be limited to 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday. The petitioner has agreed to the above conditions and has submitted a revised site plan showing the sound wall along Newport Boulevard. The petitioner has hired an acoustical engineer to perform the sound study to ensure the vacuums do not exceed the maximum decibel levels at the property lines. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kristy Stone for any further comment.
I think that pretty much summed it up. The petitioner is present if there are any specific questions that the trustees have.
What is your timeframe for the project?
As soon as the zoning is approved, we would like to proceed with the final engineering permit drawings and submit. I would say in two to three months, we plan to submit the permit drawings. And coming April or so, we would like to break ground if all the permits are in place.
You guys will be the developers of the project?
Yes.
This is more a question for the village, I think, but it sounded like there were several residents saying how Dunhamon was used as a cut through. How do we think any of this will impact that? Or are people cut through here now? What are your thoughts on that?
Our traffic consultant looked at the traffic study. She didn't think this development itself would have any impact on the traffic on Dunhamon since this site has access to both Newport and County Farm.
Okay. How long will that sound wall be on Newport Boulevard? You know, where it will like...
So originally, the sound wall stopped at this island. They're now extending it further north. We need the exact dimension to make sure it's not going to be in the vision clearance triangle.
How tall is that sound wall?
Six feet.
Six feet?
And it's... We have integrated some architectural elements and landscaping elements, so it doesn't look like a dead wall. It will be very interesting looking sculptures wall there.
What is it made of? Concrete, brick?
Masonry cladding.
There will be two color face brick and then some areas will be stone.
There's also landscaping along the wall as well to break up the expanse.
I have a peculiar question. With the amount of dirt that needs to be taken out of there, how big is the back wall going to be when they cut that all down? There is a huge hill there, and I'm hoping they aren't going to try to bring the one side of that lot up versus bringing the whole thing down to be level.
No, I think there will be substantial amount of soil removed during the construction. It's additional cost to the developer, but that's what we will be doing.
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned that the building and the car wash will be at a higher level than the housing areas behind it.
So the residential units to the north actually drain south onto this property.
Right. And what's going to happen when you put more brick?
So they're not building up... We're not building up the site. They're not building up the site because they don't want to cause a drainage problem. If they build the site up, that would cause the drainage to back up onto the residential property.
My question is, is the surface of this, once it's all said and done, lower than the houses to the north?
Yes. The final grades are lower.
That's good. Okay.
There's a lot of dirt to take out of there.
There's a lot.
Yes. We had advised them of the recommendation to build a berm, but due to the drainage concerns...
You're not going to have to build a berm. You're going to have a giant wall of dirt along the property line.
What does a sound study include? I'm assuming decibels? Is it like how it bounces off? What would we see from that?
So they do... They look at a lot of things. The atmosphere affects how far the sound travels. So it's the decibel levels at the property line and then taking in different factors over... It's not just looking at one volume, one vacuum, how they all interact together. So there's certain noise standards that they have to meet in our ordinance, so it's making sure that it meets our standards.
Okay. So then they would make recommendations on something to change if they find...
Correct. When we went through the Bannerman's project before, if you recall, we have our consultant look at it, and they had made recommendations on orienting things slightly different to minimize the way sound travels.
Okay. Thanks.
Are you going to have a vacuum outside for your vacuums?
In the back?
Or will it be encased in brick with a roof?
The noisy equipment, the vacuums will be inside the building.
So your vacuums for your vacuum arches or anything will be inside the building?
Only the arches will be obviously near the car, but the equipment that makes the most... generates the most noise will be inside the building.
So all your mechanical equipment, motor wise, will be inside the building?
Yes, the noisy turbines will be inside the building.
I just look at this from an aesthetic standpoint. I think that six foot concrete wall is a little...
Along Sterns?
Along Sterns and along the corner of Newport. I mean, we don't have an excessive amount of houses on the other side of Sterns Road. We're pretty much right near Walgreens. There is a subdivision over there, but the mechanical aspects of this building are inside them. Is your building masonry?
Yes.
So the mechanical aspects of this car wash is inside?
The facade will be treated with face brick. Inside could be steel frame and metal studs and some blocks.
I can say probably with certainty from my experience in this business that Sterns Road is louder than those vacuums are going to be outside along those parking stalls.
I was thinking the same thing.
So... I would rather beef up the noise reduction on the backside of the property than the front side.
And I would rather see instead of the hardscape wall, more landscaping along Sterns and Newport.
Yes.
Maybe, you know, a berm to kind of block some of the light and the cars and stuff, but not a hard wall. It's going to look like a fortress in my opinion. Sorry, that's how I feel about it.
We'll let the toy around with that front wall.
I think we are waiting for the acoustic impact report and...
And we'll figure it out.
We will follow their recommendations. If wall is a question at this point, and if the report suggests that it's not needed as intensely as proposed, then we might just take it out and use the recommendation by the acoustic consultant.
What's the square footage for the daycare?
Six thousand.
Daycare is about 6,000 square feet.
How many kids do you anticipate having there?
It's hard to put a number right now. It will be depending on daycare business operator, but I would anticipate roughly about 150 plus or minus.
There's going to be 150 cars coming in and out of there in the morning and then at night and the afternoon. It's not the best intersection right now, but with the cut throughs on County Farm and Newport, that will help.
I got to assume a lot of people that would use that daycare are going to live within that proximity there, coming off of Newport or across the street.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
No more questions. We'll bring this to the next board meeting for approval.
There's no reason for a hearing on that, is there?
It's been through a hearing.
Done the hearing.
All right. All right. Bear with me here. I'm using a new computer. All right. Our next discussion is going to be sign code discussion. Are we good to move on to that?
With that?
Are we good to move on to the next one?
Yep.
All right. The village staff has been evaluating the village's current sign code to improve the effectiveness and usability of the code for businesses and village staff. This internal sign doc discussion is being held as an opportunity to receive direction from the board to and present issues when enforcing sections of Chapter 12 signs. Staff has identified the most common concerns with the code, which includes the following: wall sign, height, display frontage, changeable message signs, window signs, advertising flags, and business center sign plans. So with that, I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Chairman Gunstein. One of the advantages of having new planners come in over the past couple of years...
Kristy, can you go a little closer to the mic?
Okay. One of the advantages of having some new planners come in is that they aren't as familiar with our zoning code. So when they start reviewing signs, they start to realize there's been some areas that aren't necessarily interpreted the same way throughout the years. And we've also had some other concerns that we've gotten. So we thought we'd bring up this as we start our discussions on doing a future unified development ordinance. This is something that we really think needs to be addressed before we... We shouldn't hold off on it. A lot of our signage in the industrial park exceeds the wall height. If you follow what the wall height definition is, it doesn't make sense on these large industrial buildings. It would look out of scale if the signs were placed where they should be. One of the other points we have is display frontage. We have a maximum amount that's allowed per your display frontage. However, it says you can exceed that if you have multiple frontages. So some people have addressed it that it can exceed then what you're originally allowed. There's a lot of conflicts with that. Also with changeable message boards, they weren't something that were originally thought of in the code. So initially, it was when the Lions Club had their sign that someone would go and manually change the sign. And then now we have culvers, we have the car washes that have messages that change. If you look at our code, the amount of time that that message is required to be on there is not what anyone's following. It's very hard for us to enforce the number of seconds that a message stays on the screen. Window signs are another requirement. With COVID, we kind of loosened up our restrictions in an effort to be business friendly. We're only in the ordinance, we're only allowed to cover 25% of windows with signage. We've seen some businesses that have almost 100% coverage, which kind of gives more of like a billboard effect looking at it. We have businesses that have been cited in the past and been forced to remove their signage who have contacted us and said, why did I have to follow the rules and other people don't? We just want to make sure that we're enforcing things, that our codes work with the business community, we're enforcing things and being consistent going forward. And then the biggest problem that we've encountered is unified business center signs. Each shopping center in the village has its own criteria that is different than what's in our sign code. So a sign company looks at our sign code, will draw up plans that meet the sign code, and then when we review it, we tell them that doesn't meet the criteria for your specific shopping center that you're going into. And then every time they want to change something, it could be something as simple as the font choice. Some centers restrict font choice. They restrict color choices. What you're allowed to have your content be, whether you're allowed to only have your business name. Some of them are very strict, some are not. It really does not make it a level playing field for all the businesses in Bartlett. So we would much prefer to have something that's a uniform code that applies to everyone. It would make it simpler for sign companies as well as staff for review.
I think the sign ordinance or code would be different in our downtown Bartlett than it would be on Route 59. So I think it's hard to have a blanket sign code based off of different areas within our village, including Brewster Creek Business Park.
We do have, based on the type of road that you front, so Route 59 has different standards than Main Street. So we do address things by the type of frontage that you have. But we've also considered if you have a drive aisle, sometimes that has been considered frontage, display frontage, and they've been allowed to have signs. Sometimes it isn't. The sign code has been interpreted very... Sometimes it's been very stringent. Sometimes we've been a little bit more flexible. It just has not been uniform. So we can look at things based on what zoning district they're in, if there's certain areas, but it'd be nice to have it clarified for everybody.
Are you kind of trying to base this off of any other municipality or kind of looking at what other municipalities have done or...
We have started researching other towns that have recently adopted unified development ordinances as well as more current sign ordinances. Most of our sign code is from the late, early 90s. Things have really changed.
Before LED?
Yes, before LED.
I think we should look at the strip in Las Vegas. That's what we should really model it after. You could probably do that for Streets of Bartlett. Yeah, right?
Well, if we had a unified code, we already have so many signs that are outside of that code. What would happen? Would they have to adhere? Or would it be like anytime they made a change, and they stood here?
Typically, you would grandfather in what's existing. If you wanted to phase out some, you could have a time limit on when they had to change them, but typically, we would usually just look at when they're trying to update their signage.
I think just what you have suggested here is forwarding it to the EDC and getting their opinion would be a good idea, a good starting place, and maybe bring them some of the codes from other municipalities and... Yeah. I know a particular example is Dollar Tree had a hard time with the signage in front of their place, and that was primarily the restrictions of our codes versus the codes that they had in the strip mall. So we should try to make it easier. But I think EDC could give us some good recommendations. I like that idea.
Sure.
Okay.
I'd like to have them point out the like advertising flags, and I think like a 60 or 90 day, like that's it, and then they have to come down. Those seem to stay up a lengthy amount of time and just get torn.
Yeah.
Even 60 days.
And at one point, one of the businesses had their whole front covered, and I spoke to the chief, it's a different chief at the time, and he said, that's primarily for safety. And the businesses don't get the fact that if something's going on in there and the police drives by, they can't see anything in there. So that's a consideration too that EDC should think about.
A couple of other municipalities around here have any of the flags that you see posted like you have here, open, grand opening. They're permitted via permit, and there are 15 days, and you can renew it for an additional 15 days if you're extending your grand opening. The problem with leaving them out there for 60 days, it might be in December, they're not going to get them out until March, and they're going to look tattered and really tacky in our town. So I think the timing of the temporary flags needs to be looked at pretty quick because that's one that really looks bad.
I noticed those a lot too, and I always thought it was a 30 day. That seemed to be the normal timeframe for those.
That's all we have to report today.
Thank you, Chairman Gunstein. Next item we have is Community Economic Development... Did you get what you needed over there?
Yes.
Thank you. Community and Economic Development Committee Chairman Gansey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our first item is the Bosses Signature BETA application. Staff has been working with Gino Matallo, who purchased the north end of Main Street Plaza, as well as the Still Bar and Grill late last year. Mr. Matallo has been working on updating and integrating both the property and the restaurant into an attractive and more welcoming venue to attract new customers. We worked with him for months on his plan and application. He has submitted the attached BETA application detailing his business plan and $276,000 worth of expenditures. Because some of the costs are associated with the conversion of a former barbershop space into a gaming cafe, those expenditures are not considered eligible. Staff has determined that Mr. Matallo plans to spend $252,568 on eligible expenses, including gutting the interior and remodeling, electrical upgrades, masonry furniture, a brick pizza oven, a draft system, lighting improvements, plenty more. Mr. Matallo appeared before the EDC at its August 14th meeting, at which time the EDC recommended in favor of a maximum $50,000 grant, which amounts to 20% of overall eligible project costs. He's applying under the new guidelines requiring a background check and recapture agreement, among other items. I believe Mr. Matallo is here as well. Any questions?
Thank you for having me.
I don't have any questions.
Oh, I have no questions whatsoever. I see the...
Looks better already over there.
Yeah. I see the work that you're putting into this, and I think it's going to benefit the community and hopefully to benefit the business too, but I don't have any objection to this whatsoever.
Thank you.
So it sounds like the brick pizza oven. What other things are you doing with the new concept?
We're bringing in steaks. We're bringing in... We wanted to be more of a charhouse feel rather than what it was before. I know that a lot of the residents, some missed the still, so we've kept the core of the barbecue, which is the ribs, the brisket, the pulled pork. But I think by bringing in the brick oven pizza, the steaks, the pastas, it's kind of changed who we are. And that's why we changed the look of the restaurant completely. One, I think it was a tired look, and I'm sure it served its purpose to the previous owners, but the new look, I think, represents the food much better than what the old look used to be. Me personally, I'm not sure if I'm going to a place that looks like, you know, a backyard in Wisconsin's cabin to get a steak or to get pastas or brick oven. I'd go there for a barbecue, but probably not for the rest of the stuff that we have on the menu.
I just have one other question. Does this include redoing the lower levels?
Not yet. No. One at a time.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Any other questions?
Good luck with that.
Looking forward to you being open so we can go in there.
Same here.
When are you anticipating?
Well, we're hoping that we can get a little leeway for something a little soft opening for tomorrow to give our new staff an opportunity to practice a little bit, bringing in friends and family. And then having... We've got a special event planned for Thursday where it's a fundraiser for kids with brain cancer. So they're very excited about having this at the Bosses Signature as we are to serve them. And we plan on giving a little something back to them as well. So hopefully we can be open for that. It's not going to be 100% perfect, but the important things is safety, you know, for everyone involved, staff as well as the residents. And I think that we've surpassed that. I think what we're looking at is some of the cosmetic things that aren't fully intact just yet, but we'll have that probably about end of the week or by next week. So hopefully, the village will give us that opportunity to open up for these kids.
All right.
Thanks. We'll forward it.
Thank you.
We'll forward it to the next board meeting for a final vote.
Fantastic. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right. And our second item is the video gaming analysis. At the August 15th Village Board Meeting, staff was asked to provide an update on video gaming. The memo provides an overview of video gaming activity in Bartlett starting from November 2012 through July 2023, with 19 businesses operating 108 gaming machines. It outlines the revenue generated since then, as well as the history of the number of terminals and establishments with the highest monthly revenue of $37,016.46 in May 2022 and a total revenue of $2,151,913. The memo also discusses the history of regulation changes, including shifts in fees and restrictions as well as disruptions due to COVID-19 pandemic. Additionally, the memo presents a comparison of Bartlett's gaming revenue and terminal accounts with neighboring municipalities up to July 2023. And I'll turn it over to staff to give a review.
Thank you, Chairman Gansey. So as requested at the previous meeting, staff has taken a look at our gaming history just to provide an overview of the gaming landscape in the village. As you mentioned, in November 2012, video gaming was introduced in Bartlett, and as of now, we have 19 businesses housing a total of 108 terminals. It's important to note too that this count excludes three establishment, Yummy Poki, the Bosses Signature, and On the Rocks by Bobby, which are either newly operating and haven't been included in our most recent July report, or they're pending Illinois Gaming Board approval. The charts in your packets illustrate the consistent growth in revenue witnessed over the last few years, and this growth has also allowed the village to make significant contributions to our community through the BETA program. Established in 2018, the BETA program incentivizes private investment from businesses, both new and existing, looking to expand within the community. Through the BETA program, the village has approved 571,000 worth of grants, leveraging over $7 million in private investment. Importantly, many applicants have invested well beyond BETA eligible expenses, surpassing $8 million in total private investment. We're happy to answer any questions. That's just a quick overview.
Sure. So one of the things that I wanted to look at, like I appreciate this overview, and I'm glad that the video gaming is helping businesses and it's good to have, but I guess I had some questions with how it's set up. I feel like some places have it set up better than others. I'm more thinking towards the future with what kind of business models we're going to have with video gaming slash restaurants. And I guess I just wanted to have a discussion on that to see what other people felt. Because right now, I know, like just looking at these numbers, if you look at it, 30%, over 30% of the gaming is in Streets of Bartlett across the street. So we kind of have it more saturated in one area than spread out. And I guess I just wanted to see what thoughts were on that.
Do you think we should limit it for strip malls?
I guess I'd like to see... I guess I'd like to think that we have some kind of parameters so it couldn't be in every spot in a strip mall. Yes.
State law actually will prohibit any connected building for connected strip center like that from having more than 50% video gaming operators. So there is a backstop at the state there, but that's obviously in a larger strip center, that could still be a lot of businesses, up to 50%.
So can we amend ours to change it to 25% or 30% or whatever we feel is necessary?
Trying to impose restrictions on video gaming directly is more difficult for us. Our power really comes through our ability to control the amount of liquor licenses. So we can impose restrictions on video gaming through our liquor licensing powers, but to say that any strip center can't have this amount of video gaming, we're probably getting too far into the state's purview there. So if we want to limit video gaming, we will limit the amount of liquor licenses or the types of liquor licenses that we issue.
How about limits on how it's set up? Like you see some that's in a separate room, it's off to the side, it's not...
In your face?
In your face, kind of questioning what kind of business it is when you're walking in.
So the state has some requirements on that, but obviously not all that stringent.
So the state has some requirements on that, but obviously not all that stringent. You can- there are some communities that set up, I guess, square footage requirements so that you have to have a certain amount of space dedicated towards restaurant and food service and things like that, so you don't have a small space that's just focused on video gaming. But we're not going to have a great authority to say, "This is where your video gaming terminals have to go." But we could say, "You have to dedicate a certain amount of space towards food service or other service that's not focused on video gaming."
We can require screening.
I- we could do that through like a permitting process, building code issues, yeah, yeah. But we couldn't really say, "Here's how you have to operate your terminals." We can say, "Here's how your buildings have to look," yeah.
I'm of the mindset that it's a self-regulating problem. They're only going to build them until they can't make any money on them anymore, and then they're going to fall off. What I get mad about is when we have somebody come in here and say they want to build a restaurant, and when you walk into the restaurant, you have to go through-
It's like a casino.
You gotta go through the casino to get to the buffet in the back. And for me, that's where I have a hard time with it. So I think we, as a board or the village, need to probably look at that going forward on what our layout of our developers that are coming in, and what they're doing to take that out of the first point of contact when you walk in. I'm not going to call any businesses out right now that are in town, but there are a handful of businesses that's the first thing when you walk in through the front door. Obviously, it's the moneymaker. But I do think that we have to be a little bit more strict on how we're approving the plans and stuff for their layout to make it feel more like a family restaurant if it's going to be under 21, instead of having the games right at the front door. That's all. But as far as the quantity of them, I've had- gone back and forth on this. I know Village Valvadere, they only allowed 40 permit, 40 licenses total in their whole town, and that's how they regulated it. But I don't think that's fair, because it's like telling this gentleman, "We already have 10 car washes." I mean, it's his choice to build it, it's his choice to see if he can make money doing it. But I do think that our billing department, or our- else as a board, we need to look at the layout of the proposed businesses coming forward.
So when a liquor license comes before us, can we also have the site plan and the layout of how it's going to be set up in front of us, so we fully understand what that restaurant's going to look like, if they're requesting obviously a liquor license? I know a lot of restaurants come bef- they go before you guys. We don't even see them if it's not necessary. But we have to approve the liquor license. So I'd like to see the layout of the actual property attached to all liquor license that come before us, because then we know.
Is the state's regulation on the backstop to like a strip mall, is it based on square footage of the owner's strip mall, or is it based off the amount of addresses?
Like separate locations.
Separate addresses, A, B, C, D?
Yeah, okay.
Separate locations, not square footage. So a developer that owns a strip mall that wants to get one approved could essentially put up a demising wall, put a door in, and have another unit put in, and beat the 50% system.
I think the state would qualify that as a different loca- as a separate location.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you've got 10 locations, your max of five. So if you try and open up another address or another, you know, demising wall and have it operating under another license with the state, they would say, "You're at six now, so you can't get there."
Yes, I think it would be great to see the site plans beforehand, because I think that would also help when we're looking over for BETA applications as well.
You have a tendency to agree with Trustee Gunstein, just in the matter of it being self-leasing. But when you run into a situation where you feel like somebody brought something to the board, and you walk in there and it's nothing like what we thought it was going to be, there's got to be some remedies for that. And I don't know if it's trying to draft up some type of a floor plan requirement as to where they're positioned in the facility. But moving forward, that's what we would want to probably see.
Especially if there's going to be signage inside the building.
I don't agree with that at all.
What?
I think it's ridic- you know, you're going to tell me where I can place my counters, my gaming machines. I applied for a liquor license, I'm granting a liquor license, and now you're sticking your hand into my business and telling me what I'm doing.
No, I'm not sticking my hand into anybody's business, Ray. They said there were going to be a food operation with some gaming.
Right.
Their gaming operation with no food.
And they got BETA money, which is a violation, correct, under our BETA ordinance? If you're- if you're going in for gaming, you aren't supposed to get eligible expenses for, right?
No, expenses are removed from the accommodation.
But it's a gaming facility, correct? I- I mean, well-
We're talking about how-
I guess.
And how, what kinds of licenses do you get?
So there's multiple licenses. Everybody would apply for a retail establishment, food restaurant type of license, and then they also apply for the gaming license on top of that. So that's a separate license.
There's nothing, you know, which have excluded that establishment for applying for BETA.
Right, there- right, a lot of their- the BETA expenses on that were related to the restaurant built out, the kitchen equipment, primarily. It was really a gut rehab conversion of a former, some type of medical office. So the, I mean, the BETA eligible expenses did not include anything related to the gaming, but it was more restaurant related.
I think the point is that when it's built and said and done, it doesn't have the restaurant feel, which we, to Trustee Hopkins' point, that we allocated money from gaming and then gave it to gaming. It's like a circle. So I think that's where we want to protect the BETA money for businesses that, to me, are going to have a significant investment, like, what is it, Boss's Signature, where he's going to do, and he's proved out a substantial amount, and I've seen it. And he's 90% complete, or 100% complete, before he came before us for approval of the BETA. So we had the opportunity to go out and see if we felt, and I'm just- this is me, that we felt that it is eligible based off of being a restaurant, or to Trustee Hopkins' point, a cafe. That's the difference. Maybe we have to delay the BETA application points until after their businesses are open, so that we can determine how we feel it should be, you know, classified. You can put it on paper, but if it's not classified as a restaurant or a gaming place, and we go out there and we feel as a board that it is, then I think we should have the right to decline the BETA money for it. That's all.
I agree.
Should we have our village attorney look over this to maybe help protect us from situations like that, from occurring again?
Specifically, the timing of when we bring a BETA application to the board, or to the EDC?
Yeah, to the EDC.
Yeah, I just, I think we need maybe some language in our BETA application and for him to review this. We just, we want to be protected, and I think that's why we have our village attorney.
It sounded like a family restaurant. Like, we asked that, okay, it's family friendly.
Family, family.
And now it's not. Like, your kids are standing- if you ask your kids to go in there, they're standing right next to a half wall with gaming that they're not allowed to be behind. Kids are running in there.
This is just an idea. Maybe the EDC approves the BETA to the point where it sits until they get a certificate of occupancy, and then it can come in front of the board for us to approve based off of what was built. So that we can protect the BETA money that is coming in. That's all. Maybe that's the way to do it.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
It's a reimbursement anyways. They have to put out the money on the front side anyways. But if it's not something that is a- if it's a gaming cafe and they sold it as a restaurant, that's a different story. So.
Right. The only challenge I can see-
Only solutions.
With that-
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is when we offer it kind of early on, when we're meeting with businesses, like the next one you'll see coming in after Boss's Signature is called Issa's Venezuelan Food across the street. They've been working on it for months. So we bring it up. A lot of the early meetings with these restaurants, like with Gino, are asking what type of incentives we have. That's the reason we started working with them probably six months on this BETA, trying to get all the paperwork in together. So I'm not trying to quarrel with the timing, just to bring up that we bring it up rather early in the conversation.
Is incentive the right word then? Because if we're kind of promising people that there's supposed to be a vote on it, is that like the right words to be using?
Well, how about an establishment like Wheaties that went from a hot dog joint to a gaming joint? Does that fall under any of this? Because didn't that just kind of shut down in the middle of the night?
Yeah, they shut down, but they, to their defense, they kept the gaming separate, and they've opened up the old, the entire area to just a casual sit-down drinking bar atmosphere. But I don't believe they required it or requested any BETA money for their-
No, no, they weren't. They never-
They just shut down the non-profitable food portion of it and kept the gaming going. So.
So we got some work to do?
All right, thank you.
Thank you Trustee Ganzey. Chairman Ganzey, entertaining motions are adjourned.
So moved.
Back then. My Trustee Danny, second to my Trustee Gunstein. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Danny?
Yes.
Ganzey?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.